Let me know when you're set, Harley. Okay, so I show that it's 6:31, so I'd like to call the meeting to order, so let's proceed with the roll call.
Carol Hofstis.
Laura Schifrin.
Julie Byers.
Okay, and Lance McNally. We probably don't have to do this anymore, Beth, but you know, I saw that the selectmen always had on their agenda sort of preliminary that said to make everyone aware that the meeting is being recorded. But I think we've upped the technology here where actually it acts, you know, it comes up showing you that it's been recorded and you have to consent to it. So anyway, 1.2 additions and deletions, I just have one addition and we'll do it at sort of like 1.4. Lori had asked to bring up something about hybrid meetings, so we'll do that at 1.4. So has everyone had an opportunity? Oh, and I think that we have Michael joining us right now. Hi, Mike.
Hey, how's it going, guys? Sorry I'm a couple minutes late.
Not an issue. All right, so has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes for our May 24th meeting? And if so, are there any questions?
I have a chance and I have no questions.
Okay. Do I have, if there's no other discussion, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, minute 24, 2021.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Lori, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosko, yes.
Okay, and Lance votes yes. All right, so 1.4, so Lori, what do you have about hybrid meetings?
I feel that in the past year, one of the silver linings was that all of us who were attending were able to attend whether we were in town or not. There was a savings of time, energy of commuting, barring, you know, bad weather, and plus there was more of an opportunity for the public to join in. So I think that, and others can speak to this as well, that the option should be left there. If we're able to make in-person meetings at Town Hall, that's great, and if we're not, the option should be there for us to be able to attend via Zoom. Not sure what the process is going to be to get something like that approved, but I'd like to see us work on that.
So Lori, let me just add a few things to this, and Beth, please correct me if I misspeak. So unless there is something that happens today in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Legislative Branch, today's going to be the last day that we are allowed to have public meetings via Zoom. So moving forward, we will need to meet, a quorum will need to meet in person. So in other words, at least three of us will have to be there in person. Now, they were experimenting with something today, I believe, called an owl in the town meeting hall. And what that is, is it's sort of this electronic device that is in the conference room that, let's just say you're in Las Vegas, Lori, and Mike and I and Carol and Julie are in Town Hall. You can participate remotely, and what the owl allows is that if I'm speaking, it will basically project my image and my voice to everyone. So this would allow participation by folks that are not physically there and allow access for the public to attend the meetings.
Okay, so this would allow for more than one person? If you have three people there, but say two can't make it?
Yes.
Will that allow for the other two to participate via the owl?
Or remotely via teleconference at all. What the owl provides is more for the public to be able to go into like a Zoom-type meeting and participate.
Okay, so the public will have access via that?
Yeah, that's what I believe, Beth. I mean, is that, did I characterize it correctly?
I think so. I'm still learning myself, but I don't know that two planning board members will be allowed to participate remotely. That I don't know. So that we'll have to find out, because right now, isn't it that one can call in per meeting? Is that pre-state of emergency?
Pre-COVID.
Mm-hmm. Was it only one that was allowed to call in if there was a reason to be remote? Because it's going to revert back to what it was. That's happening tomorrow. So my question is, is it going to be only one board member can participate remotely? Does anyone know? I don't.
Well, my question is, the word allowed, does that mean that the legislature is, were they mandated Zoom before? I understood that because they were not meeting. They weren't meeting at all. So now with technology, we're enabled to meet, and I just am not su-- I just want to know if there's another way that we can do it, or do we have to be mandated to be in person?
So Beth, if you could just take the action item to clarify, as long as that we have a quorum present, can other members dial in?
Yeah, and can it be more than one? Because for some reason, I seem to remember something about only one call in, but I don't know.
The mandate is a quorum, and a quorum is three of the five. Then you should be able to do two, and hopefully this is not all the time, but people can take turns because it may not just be me, or it may not just be Julie, or, you know, but yet it will relieve somebody else that may have an issue, like Lance or Mike, you know, or Carol.
Oh, yeah, it's great.
Okay, and then I just also want to call everyone's attention that Dave from TCAM basically set out a link about the owl.
Oh, awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Lori, are you happy with that?
Yeah, because, especially since this is supposedly the last meeting, I'm hoping that we could have some kind of a report before the next meeting. I will be in town, but that doesn't mean I'm the only person.
Yep, okay. All right, have you heard anything, moving on to 3.1, Beth, with regards to master plan update?
I have not. I did notify the master plan chair that, you know, I sent the agenda. And I think the email back didn't confirm or, you know.
Okay, I have not heard anything.
No, but I know that in the email, it said they were going to be, you know, putting, a meeting in person was going to be putting a bit of a wrinkle in their meeting schedule. They were trying to meet every Friday morning. But now I don't think they're going to be able to do that because it's in person. So I believe the next date they're going to meet is June 22nd.
Okay, so Lori, have you had a chance to look at the master plan chapters that were sent?
I didn't, but if they're meeting June 22nd, I certainly will have an opportunity. I have not the last two weeks.
Okay, Carol, have you had a chance to look at them?
The two that were sent, I sent Beth my comments.
Yep, thank you.
I saw them.
Okay, and Beth, did you send those to Julie?
Those were sent to, the chapters sent to Julie? No.
Okay, could you send them to Julie as well?
Sure. The chapters that Carol commented on were sent to the master plan committee. That's the only one that I received, so.
Okay, and so, all right, so I will get them to you, and then Mike, can you look at them as well?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great.
All right, appointment of a planning board representative to the Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee? So Beth, I'm at 3.2. So so that was Ronnie last year, correct?
Yeah, that was me.
Oh, that was you, and are you going to continue on that role?
I would like to leave that up to the board. If there's a board member that would like to do that, that is certainly open to the board. It's your choice.
Is it something that you would like to continue on?
I do enjoy it, yes. Yes, I do very much, yeah. I do enjoy it.
Yes, Lori?
Okay. It seems, just as an aside, MRPC was talking about the same thing, and the Transportation Commission will be meeting under the same guidelines. And I think they're going to be going through the same thing of quorum in there and then allowing, their tech person's going to allow for the Zoom or whatever. I would like to nominate Beth Exon to continue in that role for the planning board.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All right, without the absence of any discussion, how do you vote, Lori?
Yes, and thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Beth. Carol?
Yes, and thank you also.
And Mike?
Mike Barosko, yes.
And Lance is yes. All right. All right, Chapter 43D update?
Yep, still working on the applications. I am waiting for, to finalize all of that until the, everything is finalized with regards to the vote at town meeting. I'm assuming that's all going to be processed by the town clerk. So the applicant, yeah, the applications are being worked on, but they're not ready for this, to send into the state just yet.
Okay. All right, 3.4, safe routes to school update?
Does anybody want to take that on? I know Chaz mentioned that, you know, it'd be a good thing for another member to pick that up.
What exactly do you have to do, Beth, for the safe routes to school?
Well, very little right now, so I mean, I can continue doing it. Right now, it's quiet because the schools are not really going to actively get started in the program until the fall. I would, I would probably, I should have asked Chaz, but yeah, I don't anticipate it's a lot. I think it's going to involve trying to get all the schools into the program. We have two now, Hawthorne Brook and Squanah Cook are involved in it, but it would be more outreach to other schools. You know, the high school, no, yeah, the high school, six to 12, right? That's the age group. It might be attending some virtual meetings. I, you might be going to the school committee and talking about the program. So I think it's probably more like outreach at this point and and that kind of thing.
Just the high school? Is there any more? I know this is Spalding and what is it, the middle school?
Yeah, Hawthorne Brook is, and the middle school is, but it's also, I'm pretty sure it's open to private schools as well.
Do we have private schools in town?
I don't know, do we?
I don't think so.
No, okay.
But what about Ashby? Would it be outreach to Ashby as part of the region?
I would imagine, you know, that's a good question for Chaz, but yeah, I would imagine, you know, as a regional school district, yeah. He would, you know, I think Ashby's already in the program, but I'm not 100% sure. But within the program, there are a lot of different activities that the school can participate in. And I don't think that the planning board will be involved in that, you know, I mean, as a representative or I just think that's something that's going to go on between the state and the schools, the state rep and the schools, but I'm guessing, so again, we probably should just, you know.
Well, does it make sense, Beth, that we have Chaz sort of give us an update at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Because things are a little bit, you know. Okay.
I'll invite him to that.
Yeah, I just sent him a text message to see if he was going to join tonight's meeting, and so if he does, we can come back to this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, MVP update?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, there is, I did put in the folders, the plan, basically what we have to do to implement the plan. And again, I think I'm kind of at somewhat square one. We need to have an organized approach, and I am not exactly sure how to do that. So we can, you know, as you said, put it in a work session and kind of break it down into what meetings are going to happen with whom. So I think it's going to be a group effort there.
Okay, that sounds good.
I just had a comment on that. I had gone through like Chapter 8 in the, was it 7?
Oh, Section 8, now?
Six, and there's the Table 6 is like what to include in the plan and the status update.
Yep.
But in one of the comments section, they talk about, okay, if it's a mitigation measure, and then it says include in the plan, and then it says yes. And in a couple of places, it says like Community Outreach Section of Chapter 8. Except if I go to Chapter 8, I can't find any Community Outreach Section.
Aha, okay.
There was, there was another, and that was in a couple of places, they talked about the Community Outreach Section, but they said, yes, it's in there.
Uh-huh.
But I couldn't find it.
Okay.
Where's the other thing?
Oh, I can check that.
Was there another? I had gone through, I know I had a couple of.
Couple of references.
If I could cross-check to see if I could find what they did or didn't do. But that was the one thing I know I couldn't, I couldn't find that one section.
Okay. I think that's probably the best way to do it, is to sort of look, start looking over the tables and the plan, just like Carol did, and try to find out, you know, a flow of how we're going to proceed with implementing. But that I will double-check and see if I can find that section.
And maybe I just overlooked it, or maybe it's not called, maybe it's under something else, but it definitely says in the table, it's in the Community Outreach Section, Chapter 8.
Uh-huh. And that's. Do you know who was responsible for the outreach? Did it have a particular department or commission, board?
It was, it just says the town, it's, okay, the measure is like educate property owners regarding options for mitigating their properties from flood, flooding through outreach programs. And then it says in progress, the town does it informally in public gatherings through handouts, brochures. And then includes in the 2020 plan, yes, in the Community Outreach Section of Chapter 8. So it says it's in the plan, but I couldn't find that section, and maybe I'm just not looking in the right place. And maybe it's there and I'm just not seeing.
Okay.
There was a couple of places where it refers to, on the tables, there's a couple of places where it refers to that, that Community Outreach Section. So.
Okay, and do you think that's something that the board will be doing, or again, you're not sure who's responsible for that outreach task? It usually has assigned tasks, and I can't find it.
Yeah, not, not all of them have assigned.
Okay. Different departments.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one does that one.
All right, I will look into that for the next meeting.
All right.
Final boarder, Lance, if I may?
Yes.
Since we are a five-member board and Julie is our associate, should she be appointed as a sitting member this evening before the hearing?
We don't have a hearing. If we did, I would. Julie, do you want to be?
Okay, I just look.
You know, I had mixed emotions. You know, to welcome Julie, why don't I take that and recommend that we appoint Julie for tonight's meeting as a full-fledged voting member? Do I have a second on that?
Well, if I may, Julie's term hasn't begun yet.
Oh, that's right, because she doesn't start until July the 1st.
I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you, though. Appreciate it. She's an honorary member until July.
Okay, she's not, yes. And that way, it would have been inappropriate, Beth, for you to have put her on the meeting as an associate member until the July, after July 1st, right?
Yeah, so.
And she's sworn in.
She's kind of.
I did, I got sworn in.
Yeah, all right, all right. But we're thinking of you, Julie.
Thank you. Really appreciate that.
Okay. All right, walkability and bikeability study update?
No updates, sorry. There's nothing going on on that, or I haven't heard anything from MRPC on that.
Okay. All right, so Beth, why don't I quickly have you go through 4.2 through 4.5? Because I don't think we have enough time to go through notices from other towns.
Yeah, we got a few more, too. I checked the mail on my way out, and we got four more notices for Mike to read.
Yeah, so let's just do, if you could just, we can use the eight minutes we have to go through 4.2 through 4.3, so 4.2, online webinar on 728 Boards and Commissions.
This is a really good one. I just highly recommend this. I did this in Littleton last spring, I think it was. It's put on, again, by the attorney, the IG office. And I sent it all in an email to board members. I will send it to you, Julie. I don't know if I got you on there. I think I did. But yeah, it's, this one's online. I did the in-person. It's three hours on July 28th. Boards and commissions know your responsibilities, and it's very good. I thought it was excellent. A lot of it was about finances, procurement. They went pretty deep into a lot of various roles that board members may encounter in many different situations. I highly recommend it.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we still have a volunteer response form from Sue Lucio, and I haven't followed up on that, but I know she was waiting for the finance committee. That's her first pick. We still have a board member, a full board member opening. So we do, it's posted online and on the board, so I don't know. Hopefully, we'll have somebody. And then 4.4, just, I think everybody knows, the annual town report for 2019 and 2020 is available in print. I've been trying to get it online, but I haven't been able to do that. But if you want a copy, if you didn't go to town meeting, you can come in Town Hall and get a copy. And then same thing with 4.5, that's just informational only. Every, every year, we get an annual street listing. So I want to let everyone know that that is available. That comes from the town clerk and the Board of Registered. So that's also available. Yeah, that's it.
All right, any questions for Beth? All right, so Mike, you want to just start going through notices, and when we get to seven, we'll stop for our appointment, so Reagan doesn't yell at us?
Yes, let me, literally, I was going through the agenda, trying to get it, and I lost my tab because I moved over to the Zoom to see everyone.
And I'm not able to sign into OneDrive, but Mike, I did put in four more notices, and I put in the summary. I updated the summary. So I don't know if you can get to it, but for some reason, my computer is not pulling up OneDrive.
What I'm trying to do, hold on one second. Yeah, my computer's being funky right now. Helps when you're in the right Gmail account, too. And I am trying to get into OneDrive right now, and it's not letting me.
Okay, so I can read them if you want.
Yeah, if you want, that would be great. I just, I think I pulled up my work VPN through this laptop. That might be why it's blocking it.
Okay, this is real quick. Town of Pepperell, the planning board, they issued a Form C1 Certificate of Approval for definitive subdivision plan. One South Road, eight lots and four parcels, that was dated a while ago. It's just something that came through the pipes that kind of got dropped. Anyway, we're getting notified of that. Town of Pepperell Planning Board also sent a notice of decision for 66 Hollis Street. They did not specify what the decision was for, but it was granted with conditions on May 17th. Town of Pepperell's EBA is announcing a notice of public hearing for a special permit for an accessory apartment at 46 Main Street. The hearing is on July 1st at 7:20. Town of Pepperell's EBA is announcing a notice of public hearing for a special permit for an alteration of a non-conforming structure at 5 Tucker Avenue. The proposal is to construct a single-family dwelling where a mobile home now exists. The mobile home will be removed after the construction of the house. Town of Grattan Planning Board announces a notice of public hearing for a special permit. They're requesting an Airbnb use in an existing single-family dwelling, 368 Main Street, AKA the Herb Lysium. That is on June 24th at 7 o'clock. The Town of Grattan's EBA also announces a notice of public hearing. It's a request for variance from a front yard setback for a new dwelling on Lot 21368 Wallace Road. That is on July 14th at 6:45.
Excuse me, what was the Herb Lys, the?
Oh, the Herb Lysium. They want to use a Airbnb within the existing home. Yeah, they want to, it's a use permit, basically. And from Townsend, our own zoning board of appeals, we've announced a legal notice for public hearing on June 30th at 6:45. Warren Road, the applicant is requesting a variance from the driveways and entrances bylaw, Section 14524, to construct a common driveway within 500 feet of an existing common driveway, which by now, by the bylaw now states you cannot do. So they're requesting a variance. And if you want to, yeah, well, that's on, when is that, June 30th?
Beth, which one for Warren Road is that? I just, I wanted to see that.
Okay, Warren Road is, which one, or which address?
What's the address or the person?
Okay, so the address, I'm not 100% sure. So I'm going to give you map 32, block 2, lot 0. But right now, if, I'm not sure of the address, but there is an excavation.
I believe, I believe it's 190.
Is it 190? Okay, yeah.
Pretty sure, and, and, and Mike, what the issue is, is that apparently there's an issue with 911 and street numbers, there's not enough street numbers to accommodate it, and the numbers would get out of sequence. And so they're putting in a common drive, and they're going to have like 198, 19B, and 19C on the mailboxes for 911.
Yeah, that's, so that's, yeah.
Correct me if I'm right, but I think I got that right. I mean, it's the, it's the site that Kevin Smith was doing excavation on.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's closer to like 100 or something like that.
Okay.
I was just curious, so is that one?
Yeah, that's the one it is.
So does it have to be a common drive because you have to do this ABC thing? You can't, okay.
That's what I, I mean, I haven't gone into the details, Julie, but I believe that that was the solution they came up with, the lack of numbers on Warren Road.
Yeah, I was just wondering why they couldn't individually have their own driveways and still be ABC.
I'm not, I'm not close enough to it.
Well, the thing is, they don't want A, B, and C. They want numbers. So they need to create numbered house, house numbers for the 911. So they need to create numbered house, house numbers for the, um, 911. Uh, that's what they're doing. I guess they're doing it by common drive, uh, so.
Okay, uh, do you have anything else on notices, Beth?
That's it.
Okay, great. It's 7:01, and so before Reagan starts to yell at us, um, why don't we move on to a update on the Lock Brook Solar Ray? Hi, Reagan.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, and you?
Good, thank you. I would never yell at you. This is the nicest board I've ever been in front of, I think.
Oh, thank you.
Um, yeah, I might be having some technical difficulty as well tonight, so I wasn't able to remote into my office computer after like a year and a half of doing this like hybrid office remote. You would think I would have gotten it down, and it's like the first time in a year and a half that I shut off my computer in the office, so now I can't access it, but I think we can, I think I can wing it, so we should be good to go. Um, yeah, so again, Reagan Andriola from Beals and Thomas here on behalf of the, um, I guess, still the applicant, even though it's approved, um, for Lock Brook Solar over on, um, West Meadow Drive. Um, so we had, last time we talked, we had just had a sit walk with Beth and Mike and Carol. Um, and so we had gone out to see, um, you know, take a look at the condition of the plants. And then I went out a week later with the landscape contractor as well as the developer. Um, and since that time, the property owner had mowed the field again. Um, so, uh, he had mowed over, you know, probably about half of the shrubs out there. Um, at least with it mowed, then I was able to walk through it and, and could see some of the remaining shrubs, so that was good. Uh, we could see where those still were there. Um, and at the last meeting that I was at, I had mentioned that we were thinking we wanted to replace, there was three dead evergreens or dead and, or dying, um, that those needed to be replaced, and that I was recommending adding one more of those, as well as adding three more, uh, deciduous trees. Um, so when I met with the landscape contractor, we looked at the situation where we've been dealing with, um, you know, the property owner is still trying to maintain his property and mow the fields and do what he does out there. We decided that it would probably just be most effective to do, to not, not replace the shrubs that got mowed down because it seems to keep happening, um, leave the shrubs that are remaining that are a little bit outside of his, his line of mowing, that will, you know, hopefully, you know, take off and thrive, and, you know, we can keep those there. But instead to replace, to add more trees. So, um, we had identified some gaps in the existing tree line along the street. Um, and what we were proposing was to add another three, uh, deciduous trees, the service berry specifically, because the service berry that are planted out there right now are doing really well. Um, so the idea would be, it would be a total of seven new trees. Um, so six, uh, service berry, one additional eastern red cedar, evergreen tree, plus replacing the three, um, that haven't made it. So the idea is that we'd have an additional seven trees. Um, they actually, the contractor already was able to procure them, and last week was able to plant them under my direction. Um, and, you know, they were placed specifically to fill in those gaps. And the other good thing is that the service berry, the particular species he, the contractor was able to procure, was, um, a multi-stem, like a clump form, which is even better because that'll grow, you know, wider and have, you know, be much more effective in the screening. So, you know, that's basically the summary. That's where we're at now. We have seven additional trees. Um, and we think that that, again, is going to be much more immediate, um, screening. We know it is than the shrubs that are much smaller, so you're going to have more immediate screening. Um, these are going to be more sustainable and, you know, shouldn't be susceptible to some inadvertent mowing, um, because they're pretty, they're much bigger than the shrubs that were out there before. So that, you know, that's where we're at. We also talked with the developer and the landscape contractor, and they're going to work out a watering contract, um, to make sure, you know, I know that's not necessarily, you know, that's not something you particularly care, care about, other than the fact that it would be good because it'll, you know, make sure that these trees, um, you know, survive and establish so that we don't have to keep coming back and, you know, replacing them every year. So I know that they're working through a watering contract, and my recommendation was for the first, basically the first three growing seasons, you know, right now would be summer, fall, and spring of next year. And that's usually, um, what we found, at least watering during that time period gives these plants a great head start, um, and gets them to establish. So that's, um, that's, I think, pretty much everything. Um, and let me know if you have any additional questions.
Um, so to pick on Carol, so Carol, I know that you went out there with Mike for the sit walk with Reagan and Beth. Um, even though that you did not say that your thumb was of the greenish color, but do you feel that the additional, um, plantings will provide adequate, um, coverage?
Yes, I do.
Okay, um, Mike?
Yeah, I agree. I think, um, when we went out there with Reagan, she pointed up, uh, a couple spots that just needed, uh, some, some more, um, some more sustainable plants, like she was saying, and I think that'll do a really good job, uh, you know, becoming that buffer and making it look a little bit more, um, aesthetically pleasing out there.
Okay, um, Beth, um, I'm looking at you. Do we need something formal here in terms of approval? Such as a motion and a vote by the board?
Yeah, I would have, I would recommend that, yeah.
Okay, so, um, unless there's any other discussion, do I have a motion to approve the, um, updated, um, coverage plan, um, by, um, by Reagan? It's Thomas and Beal, correct?
Beals and Thomas.
Beals and Thomas, all right, gosh, I guess Beals didn't like that. But Thomas did. Um, uh, do I have a motion to, uh, approve the updated coverage plan?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the updated, uh, coverage plan by Beal and Thomas.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I think Mike beat you to it, Lori. Um, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Um, Lori?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosso, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. Um, all right, so any action that we have to take on the storm water management permit, Beth?
Well, um, there was a correspondence, uh, it doesn't, uh, Reagan, I think, is all set. So, because the storm water permit is, uh, next up, but they did send a letter that was in the folder if you wanted to.
I guess the question, do I, I guess the question I have is, I don't recall, but were there any special conditions on the storm water permit?
Uh, no, there were standard conditions, I believe.
Okay.
I'm just double checking. I, I think everything is in order on the storm water permit.
Okay, um, does it make sense that what we, what we basically talked about, I know on Warren Road, that we have the applicant basically send the planning board a letter stating that we believe that we have fulfilled all of our conditions on the storm water permit and therefore closing it, so we have closure to put in the file?
Yeah, I think so. Um, the one letter that did come in from the, um, the site supervisor was, oh, let's see, I can't pull it up, I apologize, but it's in your folder, sorry. Um, basically, he confirmed that the detention basin was built according to, um, the plan. So the as-built plans were built appropriately. So we do have that on file. I have all of the, um, monitor, the monthly monitoring reports on file. Um, I also have the, the federal permit on hi, on file. So, I mean, things are all in order. If you want, I can ask for a final letter from.
Yeah, I think it's, I think a good, uh, I think that, you know, we had discussed before that a final letter is good, so that we know that if someone looks at the file, they don't see a permit that wasn't closed out in that.
Yeah, so we'll do that. I'll ask for a letter, um, you know.
Does that make sense, Reagan?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, just something as simple as, um, you know, "Dear our favorite planning board, um, we have met all of the conditions of our storm water permit and have officially, um, sent a new notification that we believe that the permit, uh, is, you know, is, is completed."
Okay, yes, yes, we'll have our project engineer put that together.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right.
Um, and then, you know, just as a reminder, you know, we do part, one of the conditions was annual monitoring, so we are going to be continuing to do that for the landscaping, so, uh, I'll probably see you again next year.
That's right, thank you.
All right, I look forward to it, Reagan.
Me too. Thank you guys, have a good night.
Okay, you too.
Bye-bye.
All right, um, does anyone have anything else that they wish to discuss before we adjourn tonight?
Did, did you hear? I, I saw that Chaz was on, but I don't see that he's on now.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
Um, he, um, I sent him a text message. I didn't, didn't see him jump on, but his text message basically said that he's attending a 7:00 PM water, water meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
Okay, with, with, with that then, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Um, Lori, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike Barosso, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. So all enjoy your evening, and for you, probably your afternoon, Lori.
Thanks. Thank you. Bye-bye.